Like Amy said, we're gonna go ahead and mute everybody. There's two ways to communicate during the public forum. Feel free to speak up, unmute yourself and speak up. If you have a comment that you'd like to make after the public portion, what I'd ask you to do is use the chat. We will attempt to monitor that and answer questions that way during the non-public session so that we're not interrupting directly into the conversation, please. Good. With that said, we'll get started. Thanks, everybody for coming. Thanks for the great comments that we got as well. And I see, I think, most of the people who made comments are on the call, so that would be very good. So we're gonna start tonight with a couple of public hearings. Obviously, we're video conferencing tonight as a result of the COVID-19 VA Executive Order 2021 for open meeting hall. Hopefully, it will go much smoother than our attempts with YouTube in the past. So let's start with some public hearings. The first tonight is, let's see, Proposal Law Number One for 2020. Oh, sorry, that's the proposal law number one is the short-term rental law. Is that right? Do I have those backwards?
I think backwards. Yeah, I think one was the...
That's what I thought, too. I think the agenda's wrong. All right, so I'll stop. I won't use the numbers. We're gonna start with the override of the tax levy limit, established in municipal law, which I believe is number one. I'm not gonna verify it, though. What this does, for those who've seen it, is it allows us to override the 2% tax limit that's enforced by the state. It does not, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to override the tax limit. It just gives us the ability to do it. It's done every year. So far, we haven't done it, at least in the last several years since I've been participating. We are doing it. We'll go over the budget a little bit tonight. We're gonna be a little late with the budget as a result of the COVID-19 rules. I anticipate having the budget complete and out by the last meeting in May. So we'll be a little late, but obviously, we'll be done well before the organizational meeting. So we'll talk a little bit about the budget tonight, but tonight won't be the formal public hearing with regards to the budget. Okay, so are there any questions about the local law overriding the tax levy limit? I will say it three times, just to remind people to unmute in case they haven't and they're trying to talk.
Yeah, you do have the power to unmute yourselves, even though I muted you. Give it a shot.
All right, so are there any comments regarding the local law to override the tax levy limit? And reminding everyone one more time to unmute if they wish to speak. Are there any comments regarding the local law to override the tax levy limit? Okay. So now we'll move on to what I believe is local law number two, which is the short-term rental law. And I will start, and it looks like we've got most of the folks here who made comments, but I'll get the comments out here. Apologize, I'm a little old-fashioned and I have to print everything to work. I like to scribble. So if it's all right, I'm gonna start with some of the comments that we received via the website or via email. And I'd like to address a few of these initially, and hopefully, that answers some of the questions. And then we'll go beyond that for any questions. So the first, so I'm looking at submitted by Jessica. So there's a couple of points in here, and I will attempt to summarize Jessica. So if I don't do a good job, please feel free to correct me. The first, which I was honestly a little confused about, I think we need to clarify a little bit, which is a short-term rental versus, or what do we call it? A short-term rental investment property versus a standard short-term rental. And so the first question is, why is an investment property specifically excluded? Which I'll address here in a second, I think, although I think it needs to be clarified the way it's written. And then who determines whether a property owner is primarily interested in income generation rather than somebody who lives in the house part-time and is using it only as a partial income? So first, so the intent, I believe, is to say that somebody who does not reside in the home at all during the course of the year and uses it purely for investment would still, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I think this requires a little clarification, Tal, would still fall under all of the provisions of a short-term rental in this law. But in addition to those provisions, because it is purely a, essentially, a commercial venture, it requires a special use permit.
Right. It draws the distinction between those that are in a home where other people, where the owners are residing. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's a little hard. You get closer if you would.
It draws the distinction between those that are rentals where the homeowners are there as well, already living, or just renting out a room or two, versus, as you said, those that are just unoccupied by the owners or not occupied by the owners.
So I feel like that clarifies it, although I think as we get into, which is my law, which is mine, as we get into the Section A1 regarding the annual registration fee, it only addresses the requirement for an annual registration fee for standard short-term rentals, and that should be applicable to investment rentals as well.
Yeah, probably all.
Okay, so I think we would need to add that. The second question is a little more...
Stefan?
Yep.
I'm just looking at the law along the lines of what we're talking about. And I don't know if this is exactly the same thing as what Jessica was saying, but if you look at the definition of standard short-term rental, which is distinguished from the definition of short-term rental investment property, it says the short-term rental excludes hotels, motels, inns, bed and breakfasts, investment properties, so...
Which, right, I think what that means, and there's another comment as we get into some of the other comments that we got back, that basically what it should say is the definition specifically excludes lodging facilities, short-term rental investments, and commercial venues. So a short-term rental is any property that's being rented short-term that is not a short-term rental investment property, a lodging facility, or a commercial wedding and party venue.
We want to make sure, my concern was more about the properties that are purchased for the sole purpose of renting them on Airbnb. So I just want to make sure the language is clear that those are also subject to everything that, you know, somebody like Dandy, who rents a room in her house, you know, that's honestly less of a concern. So I just, I didn't realize, I read it just because in my mind, I knew what we were going for. So I'm glad everybody pointed this out, but it does need to be clear that those investment properties are subject to all of the same rules and registration fees and all of that.
Well, in fact, they're subject to even greater standard because they have to get a special use permit.
Yes. Yeah, I guess that's unclear for the people reading it. So I don't know, Tal, if you can just mess with the language and make that more...
Oh, we can... I'm sorry, I think Jessica may have mentioned this as well, and I thought I, and there she is. So Jessica, feel free to speak up for yourself. But what about somebody who, you know, buys a property, let's say maybe primarily for investment, but ends up spending a two-week vacation in that house per year themselves? And then the rest of the time they rent it out, would they, would they be covered by this or not? I mean, I think currently, they wouldn't, because they would be their part of the, at least some time.
Right, and my question was about the opposite of that. If you live here all year round, but for two weeks a year, you go on vacation and rent out your home, should, is the intention of this to have those residents, those long-term residents be subject to all of this as if they are a short-term rental, because they are renting it out in the short term? But like, is there any limit to which if I rent it out one day a year, is that, do I have to get a license and post a number and all that other stuff?
I don't believe that was our intention with the writing of the law, Tal. Is there a way to put something in there that excludes, you know, I mean, if you do a home, basically, it's like a home exchange. If you go away for a vacation and someone else comes to your house for the vacation, is that something that can be written in there?
Yeah, we're gonna have to come up with basically a path or, you know, a number of days where you draw the line.
Okay.
And it really shouldn't be something that's arbitrary. We should have some sort of basis for it.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be important to be extremely specific, because without that specificity, there are too many holes, there are too many loopholes that someone looking to get around, I don't mean to look at the worst of human behavior, but the intention was not to make it harder for someone who's going on vacation for a week, but it was to address this growing issue of short-term rentals on Airbnb, VRBO, HomeAway. And so I think that however this is written needs to be extremely specific so that it's not up for, well, I didn't think it meant that, or I didn't think it meant that, because otherwise, it becomes this ongoing conversation that we'll be having two years from now.
Well, I think it will be somewhat difficult to enforce anyway. But the issue is, and this is back to something that Rob brought up months and months ago, there was an article about Airbnb in Chatham where they threw a party and 1,000 people showed up. And, you know, if you don't have any legislation in place or any sort of code in place to address that, then you have no recourse. So that was part of why we were getting started on this. I'm so glad so many people are commenting and tuning in, because we, you know, we want to find out your thoughts on all of this, so...
From an enforcement standpoint, one-size-fits-all is easiest, right? In other words, if at any point we can go on and find a listing, a home listed on Airbnb, we consider it a short-term rental, right? Whether it's an investment property or not, it is considered a short-term rental because it was rented for a short time on one of these sites that allow us to go and find it and make the law enforce it, right? Where it becomes a challenge is, well, I only rented, I only had it available for two weeks, or only available for one week, wherever that line is drawn. Now it gives us some enforcement issues.
I think we could, we could add language that speaks to a length of time, though. Is that, I didn't see it in any of the other...
And I think where we would differentiate, I think the only differentiation from a length-of-time standpoint, this is not meant to be revenue generating. This is meant to put controls in place, right, and protect residents. So something where it is a resident who's looking to do, you know, somebody who is a resident of the village maybe pays a significantly lower registration fee than someone who is not a legal resident of the village. And we can address it that way from a standpoint of the cost, whereas the, the rules remain the same.
I could have embraced that.
So I guess my question on that is, if someone has a party for 1,000 people in their house, is that, isn't that already violating any number of noise or public assembly regulations that you have? Are those laws not strong enough to enforce? And if someone had a party for 1,000 people, would you care if the host of the party lived in that, lived in the village 365 days a year, or if they were a short-term renter? Like, isn't that a problem either way?
Did I get invited to the party? You're right, I mean...
There's a point you guys might be missing, and that is the host didn't necessarily know what was gonna happen. There's actually, there was actually an episode very early in the Airbnb business history where that exact thing happened. Somebody with a big glorious house was going on vacation and thought, hey, let's make a few bucks. And they had no idea that they were renting to a party planner. Now, me, I have no parties as a rule, and I'm here. Nobody's gonna throw a party upstairs, trust me. But, so I understand the concern, but my concern is that these very strict rules are restricting me, but they're not restricting anybody who's coming in, buying one of these fabulous huge old houses and calling it investment.
I think it, it's intended to, though. Tal, can you speak to that?
Yes, I don't...
That's the property thing?
I don't understand the argument, because I think that it does just that. I think it's flipped, Andy. I think for you, all you have to do is come in and get a permit and pay $5, $10, whatever it is. Let's say this is what I'm doing. For somebody who is doing an investment and out there doing this every single weekend, and they don't live in the place, they've gotta go to the planning board and get a special use permit and have a whole number of conditions of approval on them, including the number of times that they rent it out, the times that the people have to, have no noise at the place, all those kinds of things. So I guess I don't understand the argument.
Well, I guess my concern is that the vagaries of public policy, being what they are, from one legislative body to another, that could completely change. Whereas I'm stuck in, I can only have guests who are gonna have one car per two people. You know, that's pretty restrictive. That was in that, in that thing. One car for each two people. I've had, and I think I put it in a letter, I hope I got it to you soon enough.
We did, we saw it, yeah.
I'm gonna go over it, yep.
I've had guests come, you know, 40-year-old women who are coming from opposite ends of the country for a high, for a high school reunion, and they all come in a different car. But, you know, they're just, this is just the midpoint.
I wanna look at that. I'm just kinda trying to draw that up right now.
We'll come to the, the car rule here in a minute. From a standpoint of restrictions, because there was another comment about noise restrictions, et cetera. All village restrictions apply to a short-term rental, as per this law. Where it is more restrictive is in the maximum occupants. Whereas I can throw a party for 80 people in my home, you know, if I were renting it, it would be a maximum of 10 or 12 or whatever's in there.
It depends on the number of bedrooms.
Right, but, and then it's doubled during the daytime, right? So it's, it's not that you, you know, you can have in a four-bedroom house, that'd be 10, 20 people, right? But, you know, you can't have, you can't have a full-blown party like a resident can in that, in that same house. And that's really one of the primary intents of, of the law, is to prevent some of those things that we have seen in other communities, which really was the progenesis of this entire, you know, do we need a short-term rental law in Athens? It's about not having what happened in, where was it, Chatham? Happened here, right? So that's what started the conversation about this. And then we thought there were some other good ideas we could include. So does that make sense? I don't remember which, I've gotten off script here a little bit, so I don't remember which, which comment that was in.
I mean, my understanding was that it had to do with the butters and the butters having recourse and the amount of trash that gets generated and who's responsible for that. That's my memory of the early conversations of this.
Agreed, Maria. I think there's things in there like that, and I wanted it to be, I wanted, for me, I wanted certain pertinent sections of the Village Code prominently posted in some of these houses that are the investment properties. So, you know, I think for the most part, people mean well and, and, you know, they don't come to a place to trash it, but if they don't know where to put their garbage or they don't know they're supposed to pick up their dog poop, or they're supposed to, you know, it's like these little quality-of-life things that start to build up. So that is in there, and that's, you know, that was part of the conversation from the beginning. I'm trying, still trying to find the parking, parking paragraph here.
I'll come, I'll come to that in just a second. I know where it is. So actually, we are following the script here a little bit, because the next, on Jessica's, if I continue to move through yours a little bit, the next was a concern over parties, noise, and occupancy standards. So did we address that, the concerns you had on that? The questions you had?
So I still, I still would argue that whatever the occupancy standards are, I'm not sure why it's a different standard. I think we should certainly enforce the standard, but it feels like, I'm not, I'm not sure what the distinction is between a 20-person barbecue for the renter and a 20-person barbecue for the owner.
I have no, there is no restriction in the laws of the village on how many people I can have in my house. There's, you know, there are, if I'm there and I'm throwing a party, there's no restriction in the laws on, on the occupancy of my home from that standpoint, throwing a party. So we wanted, that's one of the main things we wanted, to make sure we included something on in the law. All the others are, you know, noise restrictions, garbage restrictions, all that are per Village Code. Okay?
You can...
I just have a question about, just getting back to the occupancy issue. If a, if a long-term renter, if there is an apartment, a one-bedroom apartment, and it became known that the one-bedroom apartment was rented to five adults, that the apartment was overcrowded, am I understanding you correctly, Stefan, that the current Village Code actually does it, is silent on that? That we, that, I'm not saying I have no judgment about that either way, but is there nothing on the books that would, you know, allow the village to step in and say, this is an unsafe or an unhealthy housing situation?
Not that I'm aware of, not specifically on occupancy. Tal, am I missing something?
Correct.
That's a separate conversation, I suppose.
I mean, it is or it isn't. I mean, I think that, you know, housing code and safety and health and occupancy of residents can, is a broader issue. So I asked because of Jessica's point about noise restrictions, wanting to apply them equally.
Can I ask about that, Jessica? I'm looking at the law, the proposed law, and it basically, what I see is Section E. It just says noise shall not exceed the limits prescribed in the Village Code. Was there another section in there where it talked about...
I think the concern is over the occupancy.
That's the question, right, is that if, if, if the renter and the owner are both bound by the same noise ordinance, then why do we need this thing at all? Because doesn't the police just come and deal with the noise ordinance? So then why do you need a local contact? Why do you need a phone number posted, all that stuff? Like, if there's a big party, no matter if I'm throwing it, if Stefan's throwing it, or if the Airbnb renters throwing it, then the police come and they break up the party if it's too loud. So what is the overlying, all this other regulation kind of puts people who do Airbnb in smaller, big ways, like at a different standard? If the issue is a loud party, we have a rule about that?
Well, but the issue is enforcement as well, and enforcement is spotty. And it's one thing if you own a home and your neighbor calls the police and says, you know, this is, it's 11:30 at night and I'm being kept up. If there are renters in an Airbnb and, number one, they're hard to get a hold of. Number two, they don't feel responsible because it's not their property. And there needs to be a level of recourse, in my opinion.
My comment was just, isn't the recourse that the police come and break up the party, and regardless of who's hosting the party? So how, I wasn't sure how posting the phone number of the someone 20 miles away would get us closer to breaking up the party so that I'm not up all night.
Well, I mean, the party is one aspect of it, and yes, the police would come and break it up. But, I mean, I think that having the responsible party within 20 miles, it has to, has, is more far-reaching than just if there's a big party.
I agree.
Someone has to be responsible for the property in the event that, you know, something occurs, you know?
Garbage is left out, things are broken.
It's twofold, too, because if you have somebody who's local, at least you're gonna be able to reach somebody pretty quickly to really put a clamp on those folks, because even if the police pick it up, they're gonna be right back at it again in a couple of hours. We've seen that all the time before. If you have somebody who's nearby, then they're gonna be able to drive out there and say, excuse me, shut it down, or I'm gonna kick you out, because I'm the owner or I'm the owner's contact person. And also, having somebody there who is going to be punished in the future if it continues to happen.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you get the same, you know, a different group of people every weekend, and they're like, yeah, we don't care. We got no repercussion here.
I think also, one other thing that came up with COVID-19, I heard a number of people say they were concerned about people coming in from the city and other high-virus infection areas into the village, and that there was a lot of, I mean, they were concerned about a lot of turnover. And having, if, if a neighbor sees that there are a lot of people in the next epidemic, a pandemic, that there are a lot of people coming and going from a building, you can then contact a contact person or an owner and say, you know, the village could pass a law that, a temporary law, that would limit turnover or occupancy. And by having these properties registered, you know where they are.
This, this did come about before we were all under pandemic lockdown mode. And that is a, that's a fair point. However, I do have to, I mean, if the, like, I know there's a couple, there's a, there's several homes near, close to me that are, the house sits empty until somebody rents it on Airbnb. And they're occupied now, but I recognize the people who are there as the owners of the property, because I've seen them prior, and it's been the same people there for, you know, three weeks. And I don't, I don't think we could stop people from coming to a home that they own to wait out the pandemic. I mean, it was upsetting when everybody first arrived, but honestly, they, they own it and they have...
No, that's not what I'm, but that's not what I'm talking about.
You're talking about turnover, I know. I haven't seen any of that, though. Has anybody?
I think it's been, I think it's been rather obvious on the weekends. We live right on Third Street, and our living room windows open up to the street going down to the park. And we know the people we see every day, and definitely, a lot of people came three weeks ago, you know, across the street neighbors. And they did what they were supposed to do, and they sheltered in place for 14 days. And then they are doing what all the rest of us are doing. But on Saturday and Sunday, you see people wandering up and down the street who are brand-new. I mean, I can't tell you this categorically, I'm not some kind of protective. But someone is renting to these folks who are walking up and down the street, sometimes with kids, sometimes without kids, not in masks, wandering up and down, jogging up and down. And I know for me, it's been truly frightening and very upsetting. And there are many communities, I think someone on this call just said, you know, Cape May stopped doing short-term permits during the duration of COVID-19.
Here's the, here's the problem with that in New York. The governor has said specifically in his executive orders that if any local municipality wants to implement any kind of law or rule or executive order or emergency declaration that is related to the COVID-19, you have to run it past the Department of Health first and get their approval, because he wants whatever we do locally to fit hand in glove of what he's doing at a state level. So we don't have that kind of discretion at this point. If we wanted to do something like that, it would get shut down, because other towns have tried to do it already, other towns and villages.
And it would, would it be more difficult without this legislation in place to even identify which ones are rentals? Because my other thought about that, and I've seen what you're seeing, Maria, I had, it's, it's busier on the weekends for sure. And then I'm wondering if they just got here on the weekends. I haven't noticed car traffic changing, or if it's that people actually, they came up here and they do actually still... or if it's that people actually, they came up here and they do actually still have to work from home during the week. And then on the weekends, they can go out and, and do their whatever. But I'm not, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know how we could tell who's who, you know, and I, and I, it's a, it's a real sticky thing to get into.
I think we run into a lot of problems if we start trying to legislate who is allowed into an American town or village from another part of the country. I get that what everyone is feeling and the nervousness around it, but this is a much bigger issue and has much higher ramifications if we get into the business of individual villages banning outsiders from coming in, even in a situation like COVID. So I would just stick to the parameters that we're originally talking about for this bill and not look at it as a mechanism to insert controls on things that I think are quite invasive on liberties, just general liberties.
I agree with you, Molly. I think what I had in mind was, you know, um, uh, there, there was this, uh, request that if people, uh, come from outside, that they, uh, shelter in place for 14 days before coming out. They self-isolate. And if we knew where the, uh, Airbnbs or other short-term rentals were, we could selectively reach out to the owners of those properties and say, this is what we're recommending. This is what we're asking.
Even that, even that is difficult. Forget Athens for a minute. Just on a statewide, there are real civil liberties issues about showing up at someone's house to determine on a police level if they are following a health.
That's not what I'm talking.
So I think we need to be very careful here about.
Most of what we have put out, you know, even as far as, and I don't want to get too off-subject here, but even as far as wearing masks in public, they're not enforceable laws.
No.
Right? They're, they're state and governor, uh, requests essentially, right? So, you know, I'm very careful when I make a, a public statement about that. The police are not out enforcing the wearing of masks. The police are out reminding people to please wear masks.
And we don't want to live in a Lord of the Flies community where individual citizens are going around spying on people to see if this is happening. That makes.
I don't think anyone, uh, Molly, I don't think anyone, none, nobody on the board, nothing in this law is intended to do anything that tramples on, you know, what we all value and appreciate as our American way of life. I think we're just, this is intended to be a, a quality of life piece of legislation. Uh, and that's why it's so helpful to have this conversation with community input because it helps us be very clear, uh, about the boundaries between something that's quality of life versus, uh, right infringement.
All right. I'm going to bring us back on topic here a little bit, if that's all right.
May I speak about the Airbnb, please?
What's that?
May I speak about the Airbnb?
Of course.
Um, I'm Valerie Suban. I live on 29 North Warren Street. I've left a few emails. I have an Airbnb across the street from me. Uh, right now, there's, uh, two couples living in, in that house. They've been there about three weeks. Before that, I've had over 40 people in that house within a month. Now, I don't mind people making a profit off of their properties. That's fine. But I'd like to know who my neighbors are. Are they friendly? Are they a pedophile? Are they criminals? Uh, these people come in and out. I've had once where there was about 11 teenagers in that house for about three days. I've also had like 12 people. I know they're from, uh, other places because of their license plate numbers on their car. Um, I don't mean to be a pain in the ass, but I'd like to know who my neighbors are. When these people bought that house, they led me to believe they were going to be living in this house. They live down in Long Island. And they only come up once in a while. They came up to fix the place and I haven't seen them since. Now, I don't want to step on anybody's freedoms of liberty, but I would like to know my neighbor. If they want to rent to someone, fine, rent it for yearly rentals. But these weekend rentals and week rentals, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I don't like this. I, I, I really don't want to live this way. I mean, I'm a transplant myself from Long Island, but I've been now here 20 years. And I really, you know, I know who my neighbors are. We wave, blah, blah, blah. We don't get in one another's face. But with all these kids and these people and different people coming up, I'm sorry. Um, I, I really don't want this across the street from me. I'm just saying it. It's how I feel. Whether you agree with me or not, I apologize.
Well, honestly, Valerie, whether, whether we agree or not isn't, you know, I understand how you feel.
But I like a law for something like this. How did this ever get to be allowed, an Airbnb? It's like having a hotel across the street from me. If I wanted to live near a hotel, I'd live in a hotel or next door. But I don't want a hotel. It's a hotel.
I think that's where the limits on the number of guests overnight come, come from.
If you go on the website Airbnb and put in Athens, New York, you will see how many beds this place provides. Now, you're telling me there's only allowed two per bedroom? If you check the Airbnb website, if it's still there, you will see it's not just the two people in a bedroom. And, uh, that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. So, uh, understand how you feel. We're trying, what we're trying to do is make, you know, enforceable laws within, within the legal limits of what we can do. We cannot, uh, nor do I think we should stop, uh, people using their homes as Airbnb. We just want to make sure we restrict it in a way that is conducive to the village. Okay? Um, the local contact information, did we address that, Jessica?
I mean, I, I guess we're just concerned that if, if you're going to call the person anyway, so why wouldn't you call the person who's 50 miles away versus 20 miles away? And if there's something that needs the police to intervene, the police should intervene, like.
This is less about coming to break up the party. It's more about coming to clean up the garbage or coming to fix something that's been broken. That's why this was, this is fairly, when we looked at a couple of different laws, this was something that was fairly common to a lot of the municipal laws.
To have it posted in the window, though?
What's that?
To have it posted in the, like, if I ever want Airbnb the house, which by the way, we've never done, I don't think, maybe once. Um, the, now I need to like have a placard in the window saying this is a short-term rental and post the contact information of somebody within 20 miles?
No, you would need to file the contact information with the village. And the posting in the unit would be not in the window or anything. Basically for the guests to have access to pertinent code like, um, where to put your trash, uh, please pick up after your dog. This is the noise ordinance. This is about, don't park facing the wrong way on the street. You know, things like that. You would not need to advertise in your window that you would be renting your home.
I don't have the legislation in front of me. Um, the, there is something in legislation about a number having to be visible from the street. What is that? I remember reading that phrase. What is that?
I believe that's just a house number.
That's just the house number?
About a 911 number, Tal? Is that just your house number?
It's the 911, go ahead, Tal, sorry.
I'm, I'm thinking now, go ahead.
Um, what I, um, my memory, I'm, I'm drawing it, I'm pulling it up now. I'm going to try to search for that, um, posted in the window. But I believe it's referring to the 911.
G2, G2.
Thank you, Josh.
And it says, SSTRs must have a 911 emergency number visible from the street. And then H, what H says is a copy of the permit, emergency contact information, and copies of the village noise, garbage, and other local laws designated by the Code Enforcement Office shall be prominently posted and displayed in all SSTRs. So that's like inside in the kitchen or in the hall or something.
And, and the 911 emergency number is, um, you know, it's that, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm pretty sure it's that red, it's, it's not, it's specific to, um, the, the county posts them or something. It's just, right, it's not like you have to put your phone number. It's the number, it's, it's, it's separate from the.
It's the street number.
I think the concern is that asking any owner of a property to identify for the public that it's, that it is.
Agreed.
Some risk there. Um, it, you know, that the home is perceived to not be occupied, you know, Monday through Thursday, for example. Um, and so that could attract people who.
What's your understanding of how the law, um, asks for that or requires?
We're, we're trying to understand what a 911 number is, Josh, whether that's something that flags you.
Yes, a 911 number I, is pretty, as far as I know, is essentially, uh, it, it, it's not really relevant here in the village where every, I mean, it is valuable, where every house has a house number, but it's often used out in the country where you might have, uh, no house number visible. And, uh, if somebody in the house calls 911 and says, I'm at 1267 Route 2.
Yeah, it's a code for responders. Yes, Josh?
Yes.
Yeah, it's about health and safety.
County EMS issues a number, signs a number for every house in the county. So the EMS responders could find it easily. And that number should be posted in front of every house for that matter, but.
I can see what, what, um, and I, this, uh, I know Jessica's, I see your name there.
Heather, I'm Heather.
Yes, there you go. Um, so I see what you're saying, though, is that if someone could see if there's a 911 number posted prominently, the person might think, oh, this is a short-term rental, since the village requires short-term rentals to post the 911 number prominently.
Yeah, I mean.
My personal opinion is, uh, pretty much every house is, is, is well-marked in the village. So we could probably remove that particular thing.
Yeah, I think, I think a street number is how I read that. So I agree, Heather. If it's something that's going to flag it. So I think we need to be very clear on what a 911 number is. If it's just, you know, the fact that I have a 30 on the front of my house because it's my street number, then that's, that I think is what we're trying to get.
Change the language to just say, must have the street number prominently.
Yeah, house number, a house number displayed on the, on the outside of the house. Yeah.
Fair enough. Okay. Good.
Do you mind, can we come back just real quick to the, um, the local contact and the, um, you know, if the garbage is awry, you know, who to call or having somebody local to deal with that? I just wanted to ask a clarifying question.
Yeah.
So this, if a citation were to be issued because there was, um, unattended garbage or overflow on any property, is the citation, would that be put in the mail to the legal registered owner of the house? Would it be tapped to the front door? How would we, with absentee's legislation, how would we deal with that today?
For every code violation, um, you can cite both the owner, the renter, or the doer. Because the perpetrator potentially isn't either one of those. So it's the same thing with this, that whomever's violation could be, could be cited, the person in control and the owner. And in this instance, the, um, the, the nearby contact.
Right. So I guess, um, the reason I ask is because, um, I would want to do what we can to strengthen our existing enforcement mechanisms. I feel, you know, somebody can hire somebody who lives 10 miles away and tell them, your job is to be responsible for the garbage. But I think the person who feels most responsible and the person who's most at risk of having to pay a fine or, um, or otherwise, you know, show up in court, is the owner of the property. So I just wanted to put out there that my concern about the local contact is that it, in a way, it muddies the waters. It, it creates another person who's responsible, um, where I might want to strengthen our abilities to make sure that that citation gets in the mail to the legal owner to make sure that that owner knows that the village cares about this issue and, and holds them responsible.
So everything goes to the, everything goes to the registered owner. And the, and the person who files for the registration must be the owner of the property. So that too is ultimately going to be held accountable for anything. What we want is somebody who can come and fix things, correct things, on short, you know, in due time.
And in case of an emergency, someone who's responsible for the place and, and it's not, I mean, it's not there to replace the person who would receive the citation. It's, it's more about someone that can be there in a, in a, in a hurry.
Good.
Hey, guys, uh, this is Todd Bernard. Um, how many complaints have there been in the past year related to Airbnbs or short-term rentals? I'm just curious about that.
No formal complaints.
Okay.
No formal complaints. We've, we've heard about it at a few village meetings it was brought up, uh, but maybe three, that I recall.
We heard Valerie just make a complaint.
That's true.
Yes, thank you very much for remembering me.
I think, hi, this is Carol. Um, you know, Todd and I are, uh, you know, we own several properties in the village and we agree, we do think there needs to be guidelines, um, because we can see that it could get out of control. Um, but to Jessica's point, I think all code enforcement and that needs to be, um, looked at. Because, uh, short-term rentals are not the only problems within the village as far as noise or other items like that, or quality of life issues. And to Valerie's point, she said she's concerned about who's living beside her. We have rentals that take place in this village all the time that you should be concerned about who those people are. So it's not just a short-term rental that's the issue. It's the overall enforcement of quality of life issues. But I do agree, I think the village is taking the first, um, positive steps to get some sort of guideline and boundary on this. But I am, I don't know, I don't know, can there be, can there be two sets of maybe, uh, policies? One for people that live here full-time and who are responsible? And then people that just buy an investment property and they never show up, per Valerie's case?
Yeah, somebody who's an absentee owner or an absentee investor versus, uh, long-term local resident who happens to own two homes.
So what we were talking about upfront is a difference, certainly from a registration fee standpoint for a local resident versus a non-local resident.
Okay.
I think that's a good point, but I'm, I think we're, there's different definitions within the law and there would be a different fee structure is what we're talking about, correct, for any registration?
Is a different, I mean, maybe this is to Tal, is a different fee structure something that's possible? Because I don't think anyone that's showing up on this call today, um, that's invested into the village would ever probably be a problem.
Yeah, that's, that's what we, we talked about that right up front, Carol, is that, that was brought up early. This is not about revenue generation for the village. This is about putting some controls in place. So, yes, we, we talked about that. Obviously, we don't have any fee structure written into the law right now, but I think that's something we definitely should and will do is differentiate in our fee structure between someone who is a village resident and someone who's not.
And I guess how do we differentiate between, you know, um, short-term, short-term, standard short-term rentals and then, um, longer-term rentals in the village that are beyond the, the 30 days, but that, um, present quality of life issues as well? Should we be talking about some form of, uh, quality life enforcement on those as well? I mean, you know, the, every village seems to have those, you know, the, the bad rent house down the street that has, you know, uh, a virtual parade of people in and out of it. But because it's not under 30 days, it doesn't qualify for this law, you know?
That would, yeah, that would fall into a different law and a whole bunch of different state, state requirements as well, which make it a lot more complicated. So that's something we'd have to consider separately, Todd.
Okay.
Maggie, did you want to talk?
Maggie? Am I up?
Yep.
Oh, great. Thank you. And I apologize, this may have been asked, um, early on and I got in a little bit late. So, um, I, I was looking at the definitions and Tal, maybe you can help me because I was trying to understand, I, I think I understand the, the goal. But I was looking at the definition of short-term rental investment property. And then I went down to a standard short-term rental. And I was trying to reconcile what investment properties, the definition of short-term rent, uh, standard short-term rental excludes investment properties.
Yeah, I just said.
And I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to reconcile those two. So what applies?
So we, we did, we talked about that upfront, Maggie. And so the way that should read, and somebody, I apologize, I don't have them all in front of me, so I'll give you credit when I get. I apologize, I don't have them all in front of me, so I'll give you credit when I get through to the, to the difference of middles. But somebody made this suggestion, that the way that it should read is essentially to call out the definitions above. So it should read, the definition specifically excludes lodging facilities, short-term rental investment properties, commercial wedding and party event. The difference, and this is something that we talked about, and we're going to have to talk about a little bit more, is enforceability of a short-term rental investment property versus a standard short-term rental, and how do we enforce that? And how do we know that? And I think that's where we go back to resident, non-resident fee structure, maybe a better way to manage that. But what we're trying to say, from a special use permit standpoint, is if you, if you purchase a commercial property with no intent to live in it, strictly to use it for short-term rentals, that you should require all of these rules still applying, and you require a special use permit.
Okay. Um, I, I would, I would also ask us, as the village is reconciling a lot of things in here, the existing code has a definition of hotel, it has a definition of bed and breakfast, it has a definition of multifamily, single-family, and two-family dwellings. So when we come to the definition of lodging facility, I just, I think it gets complicated, even though this particular law says, this law trumps. If there's a question, I think that we might, we, I, I'm not sure what lodging, what the definition of a lodging facility is that's really distinctive here. I just would like them to be reconciled so it makes it easier for any person who owns a property to understand what, what characterizes their property. And it may be that we have to redo some definitions, and it may be until there's a different update to the code that that has to be parked. But I think that it, it confuses a lot of people from an enforcement point of view or an application point of view, if there's varying definitions out there of that. Could I, I, I then was curious, so the definition for a commercial wedding and party venue, I certainly, I certainly understand where that's going, and in listening to the dialogue, and that requires a special use permit. But I, I was, that could be almost any house. That could almost be any structure in the village that could, could fall in that definition. Is, is, am I reading that correctly?
Sorry, say that again, Maggie, I didn't quite.
The definition of like, commercial wedding and party event venue, obviously, I can't do this in my house. But, you know, I guess I could host a whole wedding party at my house if I wanted to, like, once or twice a year. I was trying to unders, understand if there were particular structures that we were targeting that to.
I think it's, go ahead, Tal.
I was coughing, go ahead.
I think it's based on, you know, it says if you host more than one, I mean, if you're throwing your, your kid's wedding or your friend's wedding at your house, you're probably not doing it more than once a year.
Well, that's not a commercial.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's what it says, if you host more than one a year, then, then you get into commercials.
Yeah, what we're trying to address is commercial use of residential properties.
Well, I don't know that it's the frequency, it's whether you get paid for it or not.
Right.
Okay. And when I come back to the short-term rental investment property, and you may have discussed this at the outset, so I apologize. It's a property that's not occupied by the owner and is primarily used for income generation. So it, it is possible, I think, with that definition, that there are a fair number of people who might Airbnb their home that would never fall within this.
That's right.
Is that, and is that the intent?
Yeah, yep.
So, okay, so, so they might, you know, they, they live there, you know, I don't know, during ski season or, or they're there during the week, but they Airbnb it on weekends or something. They would not require any sort of permit, and nor would they fall under the restrictions here.
No. If, if they live in it for some portion of the year, and this is, this is part, we talked about this upfront, some por.
Uh-oh.
Stefan's freezing up.
While Stefan is frozen, uh, the, it's the difference between.
If they don't live in it at all, and they strictly use it for short-term rental, then all of the laws will still pertain, am I on?
Yes, I can hear you, you're just stuck. You're, you're frozen. Now we can't hear you anymore.
I think also, Maggie, if I recall our earlier conversation.
You guys hear me yet?
Yeah, we can hear you, you're stuck.
Your, your, your video is not working, Stefan, and your audio is going in and out.
The difference is the special use permit, if you're an investment.
Okay.
I think that's the main difference. And the, and the other, the other aspects of it would pertain to people who rent their, their personal homes out as well.
And I think we did talk, though we didn't get into depth about it at the beginning of the conversation about tightening up the definitions a little bit, and, and coming up with a defensible number, as Tal was saying, for the amount of time each year that either you, you, a minimum amount of time that you'd have to live in your home in order to have this excluded, and/or a minimum amount of time that you have to rent it out in order to be included. And I don't think we came to any resolution on that. I think we just said that we'd need to clarify that. So when it goes back to the drawing board, I guess that's going to need to be.
So essentially, if you are an Airbnb or a HomeAway, whatever the various sites are, you'd fall under the definition, if, if you're here, you'd fall under the standard short-term rental definition.
Right.
And just need to notify the code enforcement officer and go through that section. If you are, if you have an investment property solely for the purpose of short-term rentals, you'd need a special use permit.
Yeah.
That's right. Sorry about that, I do 10 hours of meetings a day.
I make one quick comment on this, that when we are trying to differentiate between a permanent resident or a non-resident.
The humiliation of that would be.
That we become very careful to not get too restrictive on this. There, I mean, if this is about generating an income while you are gone, fine. But there are a lot of us who do quite a lot of travel, we're not renting out, but I'm, I'm just wary of this kind of pinpointing who is a resident or not business makes me nervous.
I'm looking for a better way, right? Because the, the, the pure investment, it's going to be hard to enforce. It's going to be hard to know who that is. So I'm just looking for a cleaner way to accomplish the same goal more.
Well, I think we're actually doing it, but we're, we're looking at it too deeply. I mean, we, we don't say resident. We say that the owner occupies the property.
Yeah, and there's laws about that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I apologize for dropping off there.
I think, I think that perhaps we should leave the public comment, I mean, open for this law for, for a couple of weeks, so people can get a chance to write in their thoughts, and, and, and we'll revisit this, say next month's public meeting.
And certainly, we're going to have to have a further public hearing, because, you know, you, you're required to have a public hearing for every local law. And if you make changes that are, you know, this window dressing, sort of formatting, whatever, you don't have to have a further public hearing. But if you make anything substantive, then you have to have another public hearing.
Yeah.
So we don't have to do that anyway.
Yeah, encourage everybody, you know, formalize, if you haven't already written in, formalize your thoughts, write them in. There's a, there's a form on the website, or you can, you know, email to Mary Jo, and, and this is, this is a great conversation. You know, let's, let's revisit this again, and we'll get this, we'll get this good, we'll get it, we'll get it done. Right?
Agreed.
Yeah, all right, thank you, everybody. Thanks for the comments. If I can find my agenda again here.
So I guess we would make a motion to table the public hearing until further notice.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Post one in favor?
Hi.
All right, so I think it was Amy proposed, Gail seconded, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Somehow I've got three feet around me, and I managed to misplace my agenda, so let me open it up.
I think you open the regular meeting here and, and open the bids for the lawn.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, we will open the regular meeting. Um, so as Josh said, first is the lawn bid. Um, we got one bid for $28,000.
Just one bid, huh?
One bid.
Wow.
Um.
That's like $10,000 more than last year.
It's 10,000 more than last year, which was 4,000 more than we budgeted last year.
Bet I sold my push mower on Craigslist.
So we had talked about a few other options, so I'd like to table a decision on the lawn mowing until the next meeting. Uh, and I will discuss it with Anthony and the team, and, and Tal on what some of our options are around potentially hiring a short-term, a part-time employee for the DPW.
Because the grass is getting, the grass is growing.
I'm aware. I'm not ready to sign up to $28,000.
I know, no, I know.
Okay?
Okay.
Everyone okay with that?
That's not the issue.
Do we still have him? Oh, there you are, okay. All right, um, so we have an application for outdoor use permit for the American Legion for the Memorial Day Parade.
I have a comment I'm posting in the chat that was on the blog, from Maria.
Yeah, um, so the, the comment is regarding social distancing and public health. I completely agree. I think, honestly, I think it is unlikely that Memorial Day Parade takes place in its usual manner and venue. However, I'm not ready to cancel it yet. I'd like to kind of get creative with it and see, you know, where we are the end of May, and what we could do from a standpoint of a parade where people stay on their lawns or, you know, how, how do we get creative with it? What options do we have? So, um, for the time being, I would like to approve the registration and continue moving forward thinking about a Memorial Day Parade. COVID-19 restrictions will trump it, if, you know, however that turns out.
Do we want to specify that as part of the formal approval, which is that, you know, that we're approving it subject to possible restrictions depending on powers greater than ourselves dictating terms of reopening, you know, our, our region of the state?
Yes. Yeah, so approve pending COVID-19 restrictions.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll offer.
Rob?
I'll second.
Gail, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay. Next, approving the minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th Board?
I will.
Does anyone have any comments on the minutes from the April 8th Board first? I didn't see any online. Okay, sorry, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8th Board?
I will.
Amy?
Yep. I'll second.
Gail, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Proposed. So carries. Was anyone able to review the abstracts prior to the meeting?
Yes, I had one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, there was the thing for, the billing for the mulching or the chipping from cleanup day, and I know cleanup day was canceled. Did the, the mulching or whatever, the, the.
Yeah, the mulching happened.
Okay, that's it, that was my question. Other than that, everything looks like things we have to pay for.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve vouchers?
I will.
Rob, sorry, Josh, and Rob second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, I would like to go ahead and make sure I've got these right here. All right, so we're still listing local law as the, number one is a short-term rental, so.
The numbering doesn't really matter until we get to the point where we're going to pass something, because it's always going to be chronological. So if we, if we get to doing the tax override first, before we get, so go back to the short-term rentals, then that's number one.
Okay. Well, we're going to move past, we're not going to make a motion at this point to approve the short-term rental law. Obviously, we will come back to that in another public hearing next month. Um, however, I would like to motion to approve the override of the tax levy limit. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I will.
Josh?
I'll second.
Gail second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Proposed. So carries, excellent, thank you. Um, oh, you know what, on mine, I did have some notes for the outdoor, for the applications. We did have the application last week that we skipped over because we got kicked off of YouTube for the honey vendor. It is a, one of our local police officers who has a fairly large AP area and wants to sell honey Saturday mornings in the park. Recommendation right now is that we don't approve at this point, pending COVID restrictions, and also pending where we wind up on a farmer's market later this season. So I'd like to table that one, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe they want to participate, if we can get this farmer's market thing happening.
I, we, we, MJ and I spoke earlier, and she will make sure she's got the number to tie in with the farmer's market.
Great.
Right now, they're asking for Saturday mornings, but.
Yeah.
We, we tie those together, I think. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to ignore it since we didn't get to it in the last meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so we did that. Um, so this is what I've talked to some of you, not all of you about it. This is something that I wrote in, I have spoken to Tal as well as to Jason on this. Um, so I'll just read it since you guys haven't seen it. Whereas the current state of our DPW building puts at risk both personnel and equipment. Therefore, be it resolved that the village board resolves that the construction project which has been planned, proposed, and bid should continue to move forward as an essential project. Expectations for COVID-19 precautions to both contractors and residents will be spelled out in contracts going forth. So the intent being to allow us to break ground on a DPW building under restrictions, but to keep it moving forward, to, to get them out of what is, in my view, an unsafe building. Okay, would anyone be willing to offer that resolution?
I will. Sorry.
I'll give that to Rob. Rob offered, who would anyone second?
I'll second.
Amy second, all in favor?
Hi.
Proposed. So carries, thank you. Thank you. All right, correspondence. So Tal, we've been talking about this one, the only correspondence we've got, oh, yeah, we'll talk about budget after correspondence here. The only correspondence we've got, Tal, is the Cultural Center, have you seen this? Requesting.
Extension of the lease.
Extension of the lease. So I don't, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm inclined to, as we talked about, I'm inclined to move forward with this to, to get them a new lease. So we just need to type up the terms.
I'll pull up the, the one from previous, and we'll springboard off of that.
Yep. Okay, good. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, let me find my budget, excuse me. Okay, so we do have a proposed budget out there. Um, I've talked, there's a couple of things that I'm doing with it. So obviously, I've met with the fire department, I've met with the DPW. Um, I've got comments, I haven't gone in and changed the working draft that I put out there for everybody, but I'm going to start doing that this week. Obviously, the DPW budget is something of a wish list. It includes. Quite a bit of money for Union Street repaving, which we need to do, though I've got a proposal. For the full Union Street repaving versus a half Union Street repaving. That we can talk about a little bit as we get closer to. A number, so my anticipation is in the next meeting, we're within a few thousand. And we can get in and hash over where we find the rest of the money to get ourselves down, so I will. I'll get into the draft budget this week and start making those changes that I. Come up with when I talk to DPW, etc. The other thing that the DPW has in their number. Is 15,000. To add a salt shed. I don't know that that's an emergency. And I also feel like that's a reserved fund item rather than a budget fund item. So I'll make some amendments based on that. The other thing that I'm doing, excuse me. Around DPW, oh, which reminds me, we'll need to get out for bid. For. The bond for the DPW. As I talked, I reached out to. Bank of Green County. And Tal put me in touch with Stephen Riley with Whitman Osterman to do the bonding service. What I'm, what I'm going to do and MJ is going to help me kind of lay out what our debt profile looks like over the next 10 years. As payments change and some things come off. What does that overall schedule look like and how can I add? The DPW building to it in the least impactful way. So that we do minimum change to our debts, to our overall debt ceiling. As well as in the next five years or so, we're going to need to start having a conversation about our next fire truck. So as things come off of that debt ceiling, how do we start adding? Other things back in there in a way that makes sense and that is planned and thoughtful. So we'll, we'll start to have that conversation next week, once. MJ and I get that whole debt profile. Written out, I'll kind of put it in a nice graph format and send it out to everybody, so you guys can consider it as well. I'll send out proposals, which I have already from Bank of Green County on what a 10 year and 20 year will look like, what deferment options are available to us. And, you know, then they talked about. Sort of flexible structuring of that loan. So that payments change year over year based on where it puts us relative to a debt ceiling, so they're willing to do that. I just want to make sure we do it in a way that eight years from now, whoever's in our seats. You know, we don't have them pigeonholed into an inability to take any further action because of the way we structure our debt, so we'll take a look at all of that. Okay, so I'll get all that information out to everybody. What other comments do we have on the budget?
If I may say. I see there's online item A 9901.9, the 40,000 for the. I think it's a equipment. Budgeted, proposed or whatever.
Yeah.
Anthony had specked out a Ford F-550 diesel pickup truck, I know. We're, we're talking about becoming a green community. That current truck they got is going on 16 years old. And the new truck would have the clean diesel technology in it, he specked it out and it's, and I've been in the auto business long enough to know when a good deal is here. And it's, it's a F-350, I don't have the paper right in front of me right now, but I believe it was a 42, $43,000. That's for a brand new 2020 truck and I expect to get 20,000 back on this dump truck that we're going to sell. Because as we all know, the new one's in, it's up in Latham right now getting the dump body installed on it. Hoping to have that sometime next month. But the old international, as it stands right now, I would expect to get at least $20,000 back on it, so basically we're getting a brand new pickup truck for. 27,000, 20 something thousand dollars. And we're also going to save. Over $10,000 by taking the plow and the sand, the salt spreader off the old truck and transfer it onto the new truck, so that's over. That's a over 10,000, that's probably $15,000 savings right there.
Okay, so that is a, that's a reserve ad, it's actually, there was 40,000 put in that reserve ad in 19. The tentative budget calls for 25,000 going into the DPW equipment reserve fund this year. We show 90 grand, almost $91,000 in there, but Mary Jo, we spent some of that, right?
Yeah.
I think we spent the majority of it, as a matter of fact.
I don't know, I'd have to look, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, on the new truck. So we'll take a look at that, Rob.
Okay.
The, the question is whether that's a new truck this year or a new truck next year is kind of the conversation, is it a 2020 new truck? 2021 new truck, 2022 new truck, and and how do we reserve for it? Right now, we're reserved with 25K in there essentially for a 2021 new truck. The way the budget stands today.
Okay.
Good, depending on how much is left in that DPW reserve, but I don't think we left a whole lot in there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we can look more at it, yeah.
Stefan, I I have some questions about. This is the first time that I've. Been involved with the budget this early, last year. When I came on the board, it was already further along, so I'm, some of my questions are going to be just very basic. In terms of the budget. Are we required or do we desire or do we try to have? Like a bottom line where?
Yeah, it's not in there because. This is kind of one of the reasons we're, we're a little behind. We don't have a town assessor. So we're looking to get our assessment done via the county, although I guess now the town has brought someone in to work it, so we don't have revenues in there yet. We're going to put. This year's revenues in there to give us something to work on. But I think they've gone up significantly this year, which, which. May have a little impact. Where it has an impact is on the percentage, right, so we'll get those, we'll get the revenues in there accurately, but for the time being, we'll put revenues in. Where we. As we start to play with the numbers, what we're looking at is that 2%. Right, and so this will be set up, once we get the revenues in there, that as we start playing with numbers, we'll be able to see where we are against that 2% tax gap automatically.
Okay.
And that's not in there yet, which is, it's really a key tool to doing this, but we're revenue dependent on it.
Okay. Another kind of global question is. In terms of salaries for village employees, do we routinely put in like a, an increment? When, when was the last time employees got salaries, did they get them every year, does the budget envision increases for?
There's, there's only a few, and I won't go into names or positions on any of that right now, the majority are. You know, DPW police are based on a union contract and that, that one is a fixed. Rate. Generally, since I've been here, I look at inflationary increases. For the most part, unless there's some reason for more or less, which we could have that conversation.
I also have some questions about a number of line items and I can start on them, but if it turns out. There's some global explanation for these that answers them all, then, then we can skip, but if, if you don't mind, if I can. Start on one, I'm, I'm looking at the spreadsheet and I'm looking at line 17.
I don't have it open, do you have an A number, A's?
Yes, it's A 1325.1 Office Administration. And the number in the, the tentative budget for next year is 78,581. But if you look at. Last year and the year before, like last year, we spent 85,000. And this year, we're kind of at the current rate of spending, going to be spending about 84, $85,000 again. So I'm just wondering whether the tentative budget for next year in this line should be 85,000, which is like $7,000, $6,500 more than it is.
MJ, can you, so first of all, to me, looking at this as a March 20th date. I would have said we're on track to be 70 or slightly under, slightly over 70.
Well, 60, this, this 63,000 to 65, that's through basically the end of March, isn't that?
End of March.
Isn't that three quarters of a year?
No. March.
No, it's a little more than that.
It's a little more than that.
But you have to look at the, you have to look at the salary, you have to look at the salaries from the water and the sewer as well. So for like Office Administration, you look at A 1325.1, and then you have to go to the Water Fund. And look at what's equivalent to that, which would be office salaries, take that figure and then go to the gen, the sewer fund and look at that same. Line item and add those all together, and that would be the total of the office or admin. Admin salary.
Okay, I was looking, is it appropriate, MJ, to look at just one at a time? I, I, I think what I'm hearing you say is that all those others are also admin salaries, but I'm looking. At this to begin with, are, are you saying that the admin salaries are apportioned between the three different budgets?
Right, three different funds, yes.
So you, you roll them up and then compare the, the rolled up figures for each of the years?
Well, you take the total salaries and basically. It gets divvied up between each of those funds each year based upon need and the amount of money that you have to put towards that. Some years you might have more money in your sewer to make up the difference as opposed to taking it all out of general. So as long as those three funds, the admin amount equals what you need, then you have a little bit of, you have a little bit of leverage there to use.
So this, this figure that appears here in the budget, then the 78,581, that figure is based on. Related numbers that also appear in sewer and water?
Right.
Okay, so, so the fact that we spent. For the year eight, the FY 18 to 19, we spent 85,000. That, that's not a concern that we're proposing to only spend 78 next year because the difference, yeah, okay.
Right, and the other thing too is last year, last year, you're looking at the fiscal year of last year or this year? Front of me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking.
The 85,000 spend was 18 to 19.
Yes.
Okay, so another reason.
Year spend looks to me like it's on track to be low 70s against the $76,000 budget.
Right, and the other problem with that too is that last year, we had one employee that was leaving and one coming on. So the, the salary was a little bit screwed up because of that, you had somebody leaving, somebody coming in, so it may not be what the normal was for like, let's say, the last four years.
Okay, okay, I, I won't dwell on this, then I want to, let me move on to another one that I have a question about. The A 1325.4 Office Expenses. And again, this may be one of those things where it's apportioned between three budgets, but it looks like last year. It was about 16,000, this year so far, it's only eight, and yet we've budgeted close to 23 for next year, so I'm just wondering whether that.
That's a roll up, if you go back to page seven, I don't know if you've got it printed, but all the ones that are highlighted. Have a detailed breakdown of what's in it.
Okay.
Get a little bit more, you know, to your point, we can get a little bit more granular on that one. And see where we underspend and where we didn't.
Okay, I'm, let's see, I'm looking at, this is Office Expenses.
So like, for example, there's 4,400 for payroll expenses that looks to me, and MJ, you can correct me if I'm wrong, looks to me like something that comes out all at once at the end of the year.
Yeah, we usually make the transfer around now, I think I made it this month, so I don't know if it's reflected in that budget that you have for that payroll expense or not. All right, so that's like, I would say $5,000, so that would make up some of that difference.
Yes, but even so, like last year, not, not the year we're in, but last year, the total amount ended up being spent was like 15,900 or 800 or 16,000.
That's fair, that, I think that's a fair proposition.
It's, I'm just trying to look at ways we can save money so that we can.
Yeah, the other thing, I haven't looked at it in a while, but I did want to, I know last year I had tried to look into buying some new. Accounts payable software, which is about $2,000, because ours is about be, you know, we've upgraded our tax software. Our water sewer software considerably, so the only thing left to upgrade is the accounts payable. Which is those abstracts there and paying bills, so I'd really like to see that come up to speed with the other modules that we have. So I had put that in there, so that might be what a little bit more of the jump in that is to.
The G slash L software?
Yes.
So that, that's.
Then a ledger accounts payable, yeah.
Yeah, so that's at 3,000, which is not that much more than we've spent in prior years, it's been 2,000 in prior years, so. Even adding another 1,000, so that, that we're at eight, we're at eight here and five for the payroll services 13 and additional one. Over the two that's already included for the software, that still only gets to like 14 or 15, so.
I'm with you on that, Josh, for that kind of thing, if you just want to make a note for the line item, I've gone through and made notes for several of them, not all of them.
I did.
You see some that look like that, make the notes and I'll go through.
I did.
We can take the first stab at it that way.
It's, it's, it's in there, it's in, it's in, I, I did that.
That's fair, I think those are the kind of things we want to flush out of this.
On the other, the other hand. Just a question, I don't know what our expenses are for elections, but A 1450.4 election. With this, what, those, is that going to be higher because we're going to end up having to basically prep for two elections in the fiscal year, I don't know. What the village actually spends on election.
That's a good question, I don't think anybody knows the answer to that one.
So I, maybe we want to put some, a little bit of cushion in there, it's just a thought.
Okay.
And then, code update, I wanted to understand that because it looks like the last two years and this next year. We've had $2,000 in the budget and never spent anything on that, what, what is, is that something that we can use to improve code enforcement in some way?
No, that's a maintenance software for the E-code.
Okay. All right, then moving into Police Salary Chief. And again, I don't know if some of this is also divvied up into sewer and water, but it looks like we're on a course, we spent about 14,000 last year. We budgeted 14,000 this year, it looks like we may be getting. Close to that and, and in terms of what we're going to end up spending this year, and yet we've only got 11,000 in the budget, so I was just.
Flagged that one as well.
Should this be closer to 14?
I flagged that one.
Yeah, I thought we fixed that, but maybe not, that was brought up the last time.
On your new spreadsheet, Stefan.
Yep.
You, you, yeah, there's an error, so we fixed it, yeah.
Okay, and is that true for the officer salaries as well, it looks like we're, we, last year we spent 70, we're going to be 60.
You have to look at that line item, you have to look at the, the salaries and also the security officer or school resource officer. Add those together and then subtract the appropriation amount that we're at, or the expense amount, you have to combine those two.
Okay, all right, and can I assume MJ that, then, then you've done that and that's how you arrived at this?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, looking at Police Expenses. I'm looking at the details there. It, it, I see a note, Stefan, total budget should be 27,000. I guess the reason I, yes, I'm asking also that it looks like last year we spent 20,000 on, on expenses. And this year. We're on course to spend maybe 15 to 20, so I'm just wondering, we're budgeting 30,300.
I already talked to Roger about that one.
Okay, all right. And.
If you want, you and I can go through this, because a lot of these I've already kind of looked at.
Okay.
Give me some ideas on where we can go rather than trying to go line item by line item, if that's all right?
Happy to, yep.
If there's any that look glaring that you see that look like an error, then we can highlight those, otherwise you and I can kind of go through it.
Yeah, I, I had gone through and, and in the comments section that. Yeah, I, I had gone through and, and in the comments section that you've left for us. I had, you know, put in all those comments, so. I'm hap, but I'm happy to go through them.
Good. I'll, I'll, what I'll do is, like I said, I'll go through it, take a stab at it, get something in this weekend, along with the debt piece. Once I get all that together, maybe early next week or even late this weekend, you and I can get together and chat about it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on the budget right now? All right, so new business, I think we talked about budget, we're good, lawn mowing, we talked about. Old business, DPW building. So we, we passed the resolution to make it essential. That doesn't guarantee us anything. We still have to convince the archaeologist that he wants to come out here and help us. So Jason was making a call to him. I talked to him Monday or Tuesday. I haven't heard back from him, but we're, we're moving it out. We did get the bids out to all of the winning contractors. We haven't heard back from them, but that he said can take up to a month. So we're still on track to break ground probably mid to late May, right now is what we're looking at. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, hopefully we don't even need the declaration of essential, but it's looking like we probably will. Given the COVID nineteen circumstances, so I just wanted to make sure we had that addressed so that we can communicate appropriately with contractors that we're going to start work as soon as possible. We have not gotten the dig done. I think everyone saw that relative to the dig requirements for the archaeologists. Jason's note, asking them that they rescind the, whatever it was, the laser. Sorry, the, the sonar depth finding or whatever it was, they did rescind that. They said they want to do a essentially a well dig. It's, it's just a backhoe. We take a couple of digs with the backhoe. And so long as we don't find anything, we'll be good to go. We do that with the with the archaeologist present. Tal, I see a note here reminding me, we were supposed to hear back from the assessor on the old DPW building.
Oh, appraisal.
About the appraisal? It was supposed to be here, but I've not gotten it yet, no.
Okay. Can you, can you push on that button for me a little bit? I do want to reach out to the guy who showed interest and at least give him some feedback on that. So MJ, remind me this week to, to reach out to that guy and let him know that we haven't forgotten about him. But that A, you know, we need them in the building until we have a new building and, and B, we need to get an appraisal done. So I'll reach out to them. Rob, am I missing anything on the DPW building?
No, I believe you covered, covered what I had anyways.
All right, comprehensive plan update. Josh?
Yeah, the steering committee and the consultant are, are working favorishly. We have our monthly steering committee meeting coming up Monday evening. Where the committee will review in a Zoom meeting like this one, the latest iteration of the survey that's intended. That they have been working on by email back and forth with NAM over the past month. Once the survey gets into it, whatever is going to be its final form, which could be as at this meeting or probably no later than the next meeting. Then we have to have the big question, the steering committee has to have the big conversation about how to administer it in a time of COVID nineteen. You know, you're, we're beginning to get little hints and signals that there's going to be regional lifting of social distancing. Don't know what that means, don't know when our turn would come, don't know. But that, that clarity about that is going to be coming, whether it is, involves lifting or not lifting, some more clarity should be coming in the next few weeks, which will coincide with the finishing of the survey. And at that point, the steering committee can decide, you know, whether we can administer it as planned or whether we're going to postpone administration of it or whether we are going to administer in some modified way.
This is a, this is a paid village Zoom account, so.
Yeah.
Welcome to use it.
I was going to say, obviously we can't meet more than two at a time, but if anybody wants the Zoom info.
I'm not sure what you're talking about in terms of the survey.
Oh, no, I, Stefan said.
For the meetings. Meetings, if we haven't relaxed any of the social distancing rules.
Okay, yes.
I was stating is this, that what we're on tonight is a paid village Zoom account.
So, so that, that's, that's the, the second part of input. What, the first part is the survey. And then the second part of the community meetings that we were going to have at the end of March and ended up needing to postpone. And so this, the, the steering committee really hasn't had much conversation over the last month or so about these public hearing or public forums, public input sessions. It's been focusing just on the survey. So, and again, my earlier comment about a, a little more clarity about when and if and how society will be opening up again, will be, will feed the steering committee's thinking and deliberations on rescheduling the, or finding some alternative way such as Zoom to gather public input.
So just, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't paying attention, but from a project plan standpoint, what is the timeline for the surveys to come back and results to come in and that kind of thing?
Well, it's, I'm sorry, it looks like Nancy was going to, wanted to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing about the steering committee. We were supposed to break for the summer. So after the last meeting in May, we were supposed to break until September.
Yeah, so. Yeah, we've got our April meeting and we've got our May meeting. And so if, if it looks like there, I mean, we, that original schedule was back when life flowed you know, a different, different way and a lot of people were away in the summer. If it turns out that, you know, things start picking up and get very busy in the summer, we as a steering committee can always decide to, you know, meet in June, meet, meet in July or August. We'll, we'll kind of see what happens. But Stefan, to, thank you Nancy, but Stefan, to answer your question. That level of detail hasn't been, that, that would be tied up with kind of the decision of when and how to administer the survey. And, and just to give you a little more detail about how the survey would go in, in the real, in, in the olden days, is that we would send out a postcard to everybody in the village in town saying that we have this survey available and you can either fill it out online and there would be a URL on the postcard. Or you can come into the village office and pick one up. And we would have copies there. And I think we would also be putting up sign, well, I guess we wouldn't need to if we were sending postcards everywhere. Wouldn't need the signs so much. So we can still send out that postcard. We could still do the online survey and we could even possibly do the people who don't have a computer, don't want to go online, can't go online. We could leave a, a pile of surveys in the front hall of the, of the municipal building, not requiring people to go into the office. They can just pick one up and take it and then mail it in or drop it off. So it is possible, but to your specific question about timing, I think it was intended to allow maybe six to eight weeks for the survey. Just because to get the postcard out, people to look at it, to think about it, to look at the survey, maybe not answer it all at once. Maybe come pick it up, fill it out. It's just to make sure, give everybody ample time to, who wants to fill out a survey, to fill it out and get it in.
When, I, I guess, when does that process start then? There should be nothing stopping us from getting the, the survey process started at this point, correct?
Well, good question. I hadn't actually thought about it, but as I'm thinking about it, we are getting very close to our final version of the survey, which we should probably have, I would say optimistically in one to two weeks. But probably also maybe three to four weeks, maybe by the time of our next.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we are still making progress. We are progressing with development of the survey.
Yes.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. Anything else on the comprehensive plan?
No.
Questions?
Sounds good.
All right, that's everything we've got on there. Why don't we go around the room? We'll start with Josh.
Okay, I just, a, a quick, couple of quick things. One is I sent at the last minute to people a proposal from Jason, our engineer that we work with at Lamont Engineers for three thousand dollars. This is to help us move forward with the thirty thousand dollar grant that we got from Nicerta because we became a clean energy community to slip line under Second Street and portions of Franklin Street. And Jason has done some preliminary costing and has found that we can actually do what we want to do for anywhere from like the low thirties to mid thirties. And so.
Okay, that's better than we had originally thought when we talked to Jason on this.
I think so, but then there would be an additional three thousand dollar cost for Jason and his team because they put together the request for proposals, they review the proposals.
Okay.
So we can either this evening approve that expense so that Jason can go ahead and put together a request for proposal or put it off.
Just a second.
Can I say something in the dark over here? The Nicerta agreement has, should that be signed first, Tal? Yeah, the contract with Nicerta.
Oh, yeah.
Before we go ahead with Lamont, or does it matter?
It, it's probably better. I mean, it's not required, but it's definitely better.
Okay. It's just their agreement. They sent it over and wanted the attorney to look at it. And they, and Tal looked at it and said it was fine, so.
Okay, I'll come by tomorrow. We'll get that signed. And then it looks like we've got the money to, in engineering to pay them the three thousand dollars. There's nothing else I'm missing in here MJ that we haven't funded yet, right?
No.
I, I do want to just point out, and I, I don't think this is a problem, it's just for purposes of clarification, that the three thousand dollars is, it, it assumes that village administration and DPW are going to be doing things that they normally do and I believe have, understand they're going to do and are willing to do. So he, this is mostly what Lamont would be doing for us is kind of prep and getting us all set up to kind of go with the project. And then we would take over from there.
I, I'm comfortable going ahead and, and making a resolution to fund Lamont?
A second.
I can't, I can't offer, so you offer.
Yeah, I'll offer.
Gail offers, two seconds.
I'll second.
Josh seconds, all in favor? Okay, and MJ, I will come by tomorrow and sign the agreement.
I have one other, one other thing that I wanted to ask about is we've received a couple of communications from Susan Brilly about Peckham.
I'm going to talk about that in just a second.
Okay, then I don't have anything else.
Okay, Gail.
Yes, the police department email has been set up by I guess, so they're all ready to go. I have the quote on the radar recorder that you and Roger had discussed.
Let, let's have a short discussion about that because I talked to Roger about it. My personal opinion, and that's why we can discuss this and you guys can argue with me. If we're going to spend significant money on radar, I'd rather it be visible rather than invisible. In other words, I would much rather have the big welcome to Athens, slow your ass down sign than the hidden stuff we can borrow from the state anyway.
Right. Is that's what the quote was for, right?
Well, the quote was for the hidden stuff with the ability to take the hidden thing and add it on to what I'm talking about. I don't know, I don't know if there's a cheaper way to go by just going with the visible signage.
Okay, he, he said it's something that you put on a pole, that you would place on a telephone pole.
I would rather something that he moves around behind the new truck and puts wherever we happen to want it.
Oh, it can still be moved.
Okay.
That's what he told me.
Look, I guess what I'm saying is, let's look at a couple of options.
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure what we're describing, but it's not what I had in mind, which is what you put on a trailer hitch behind the Explorer and put it on Union Street today and Vernon Street where I may have driven a little too past, too fast past Stephen the other day. Actually, no, that was scary, sorry. You know, but we can move it around to different entrances of the village, right? Behind the truck. That's what I've had in mind. I thought we had priced that a year or two ago at, you know, thirty-five, four thousand dollars, something that's definitely affordable. And, and I think it almost adds another officer, in my view.
I know I slow down when I see those things.
I do too.
Oh, well, I don't, I don't slow down when I see those things because I'm always driving within.
Turn your halo up, it's a little dim. Is that, is that fair, Gail?
Yeah, I thought that what he sent me was what he said that you and him had discussed.
Okay, it, what, it didn't look like what we were talking about, but let's see, and then, and then, let's, let's make this part of the department head meeting next, at the next meeting and we'll, we'll make a decision on what goes in the budget there for this and what it's going to be. But I, I don't really, I don't care is a strong way to say it. I much, much prefer something visible than, and I don't feel a need for something that we can hide. So if it's going to cost extra to get it to do both, I don't need it to do both in my view.
Okay.
Okay.
And then my last question is conveyance of the municipal building, where do we stand on that?
Spoke to Rob earlier today. He says they're still moving forward. He's going to call Virginia and find out what the holdup is. I talked to Tal, we believe the ball's in their court. We did everything we needed to do. We sent them the MOA, I think that's what it was, is an MOA on, on where we stood. We did not hear back from them, which we took silence to be consent, but no deed has been transferred. So I reminded him today, he said he was, he's still doing it. He's going to call Virginia and find out what the holdup is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have, oh, I do have one other thing. Roger said something about somebody complained because police officers did not wear their masks.
Yep.
There was two of them.
Yep.
We don't ever schedule two together. So it's possibly another police force that they just got confused, I don't know. But I know when I saw them.
To most people, police is police. And they should be setting the example. So if it was, if it was our guys, we were going to, you know, there's not much we can do if it's sheriff. We can call Sheriff Kuzminsky and talk to him about it. You know, I've, I've spoken to him, they're taking all the same precautions we are. He may not be aware of the policy we put out about going to stewards with a mask on.
Could be state police too.
State police should be aware as well, you know. I think Roger told me he was going to reach out and see who it may have been, so. But yeah, I understand it wasn't us.
Okay. That's it.
Anything else?
No.
Rob?
Just a couple of things. Anthony wanted me, I know it was posted on the Facebook page, but Anthony wanted me to remind everybody about the hydrant flushing, it's supposed to take place first week of May.
Good.
And also that he will be on vacation for the first two weeks of May, but he will, he'll still be in the area. So if an emergency should arise, he would be available for that if we need him in an emergency situation.
The only place you could go right now is Georgia anyway.
What's that?
The only place you could go right now is Georgia anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
Wayne's got it. Nothing but faith in Wayne. He's got it.
And basically, um, as I stated before, the new dump truck was in, it's up in TNT Body King up in Latham, but um as another sample of COVID-19 uh having an effect on it, they're on limited staff, so the dump body and the plow and salt spreader is not installed on it yet. Hopefully sometime next month, maybe we'll
Stay on, you're a human being. They're working on, they're working fastest on the one who's complaining loudest right now, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure. So other than that.
We're in the same boat on the new uh police vehicle, right? We just got a brand new police vehicle that we can't use because
Yeah.
people who put the lights and the radios in are are in the same situation, so.
Yeah.
I went by and looked at that uh vehicle. It's very attractive.
Yeah, it's a nice car.
Okay, uh, that's all I have, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Amy?
Um, I was gonna ask about the assessor, but you sort of brought that up earlier. That was my, my question was um what's up with the tax assessor?
Uh, do you have any update that I failed to cover?
MJ?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. The mysterious.
They uh, they hired a temporary, they hired a temporary um assessor over in the town. He's been there a couple of days last week. So, but you know, since we're social distancing, we haven't really, you know, formally met or anything.
Okay.
But um, so I'm gonna send out an email tomorrow, get, try to get somebody to answer me. There, I sent something to the county. I told Stefan, but um they say they're open um to Green County real property tax, but I sent an email last Thursday and um never heard anything back, so. Anyway, so I guess Stefan and I were kind of decided that we would take last year's assessed valuation, if anything. We don't normally have much change, so.
Before we formally pass it, MJ, we should have
Yeah.
assessments.
Um, and then the only other thing that I had was um we're still think, we're still thinking that we might be able to get the farmer's market together for a late season. We've, our committee's a little sluggish, but um uh I spoke to Tal about going under the auspices of the village for the first year. And I guess we'll just um move forward in that way, but I I need to know the next steps as far as that goes. Is it just like a um, the use permit or? How's that work?
Tal?
Oh, you're talking to me.
Does anyone know this kind of general question to the group? What the hell do we do now?
Well, I think you can figure out when you're gonna open and then try and reserve the space if you want to use um Saturday mornings, is what you're looking at.
Sunday mornings, yeah.
Sunday morning, okay. Um, and just reserve that with MJ so that, you know, nobody else is gonna be taking the area down there and
Okay.
You know, we should set up another line item in the budget to handle that so that money comes in and goes out and in the first year, that's what we'll have to do and put our our insurance barrier on notice if we're gonna be doing that. Um, I doubt that they're gonna have have much of an impact on our policy or on our premium, so we can just know about it so that we've got a rider for it.
Okay.
Um, and then going forward after that, whenever you're ready to start really raising funds, I'll do the 501(c)(3) and all that stuff up for you so that um you can be a separate corporation and do all those things yourself, but know you're gonna have to have money on hand to pay for your own liability insurance and, you know.
Okay, um, yeah, um Nancy, I pointed out that um Cooksacki's delaying their farmer's market start, so we're kind of watching what other people are doing and hoping to eke at least a short season out of late summer, early fall, something like that, you know? Um, so uh we're just gonna move forward and and start trying to get some farmers and and vendors that uh we had a bunch interested, so we're gonna circle back with them and see where they're at. That's all.
I I think if we could get even a couple of them out the end of the year, it'd be such a relief for people to have that outlet once we release these restrictions that I think it'd be a good way to get started with it.
I I do too, and I I think it it might be helpful for the, for the farmers, you know?
Yeah.
Considering everybody's uh everybody's adjusting.
You know, somebody who wants to sell honey.
I know, right?
Apparently I've got competition, though.
And Black Horse said, um Shelley said that they're still interested.
Good, okay.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Nancy.
All right, so we need to get, we need to wake our committee back up. Um, maybe we'll zoom.
Okay.
Anyway, that's where we're at.
All right. Tal?
The only thing that more that I have to add is that um the temporary assessor is a guy named um Gordon Bennett.
Gordon, temporary what, sorry?
He's the temporary assessor.
Oh, okay.
And he is the assessor in Cooksacki and uh Greenville as well, so I've worked with him quite a bit. He he does a good job, and so um hopefully they'll make it permanent. I know he's been sort of catching them up because there are a lot of things that have come in over the last couple of weeks that just obviously didn't get done.
Cool.
Okay. That it? MJ?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. All right, so I got a couple of things. Um let's start with, uh, we talked last week about a valve replacement. Um, I think, Wayne, can you help me out? Is this, is this a wastewater treatment or is it a water system? Uh, the valve replacement we need to do?
Um, I believe, isn't that the one on the, the pump station on Scary Turnpike?
I think that's correct, yes.
Okay.
So that's water?
No, that's sewer.
Sewer, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, either way, MJ, it looked like there was money in either budget for $4,500. I talked to Anthony. He says perfectly comfortable doing it. Um, I think he, yeah, he mentioned that you, you had, he talked to you about it.
Yeah.
He thought you guys could get it done in a day, which to me sounds like it's worth the $5,000 we saved to do that.
Right. Actually, I might be mistaken. It might be the valve replacement up on, up at Sleepy Hollow.
I don't think it's the Sleepy Hollow.
Oh, it's not, okay. Then it's got, the only other one I can think of is is the um, the pump station where um Seth had the quote from that other company and, yeah, we would definitely save money if I do it.
Okay. So that's still sewer, right?
Yes, that's still sewer. It's uh two valves and two check valves.
All right, so when I went through here, I saw a couple of line items that looked like we'd be okay to do that with.
Well, after we pay these bills and I post those, then I'll make out a resolution for next meeting to transfer some money into one of the line items from the other line item, you know, switch money around.
Okay. Okay.
So I'll write it down.
All right, so we'll execute to the $4,500 one with with you guys doing the work. Um, okay, so I said I'd talk about complaint number 287, which is uh the complaint regarding Peckham. I've spoken a number of times with the plant manager. Um, I have not yet spoken to the regional vice president, but I've got, uh, I've got to call into him. Um, they had a fan motor go bad that weekend, which he believes is probably what the noise was. It was bad for the bulk of the weekend. It's one of the fans on the odor um odor reduction system. Um, that, okay, so that sort of answered the question as far as the weekend, but you know, what she had sent about hours of operation and stuff, I spoke to him about. And their hours, their published hours of operation are the same, seven to 3:30. But they take trucks in at four in the morning, almost every day. Uh, and they take barges in over the weekend. So that's where I stopped talking to the plant manager and I want to reach out to the regional manager um about you know, if they publish hours, why aren't they working within those hours? And how can we get them to be better neighbors when it comes to those hours? So I will continue that conversation with the regional manager and and start upping the expectations on their, their behavior a little more than we have, I think.
I think also uh Susan was talking about um just, I don't know, the looks of it as well. Um that in this Pleasant Valley location, they spent over a quarter of a million dollar on on improvements and including landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. So when you're talking to them, Stefan, if you maybe want to ask about that.
Yep. Um, we talked about the DPW, but again, I just uh MJ, we need to get bids out. I think we talked about it already. We need to get the bids out for the loan. So just, I'm I'm saying that again, MJ, just so you remind me and we don't forget.
To get the bids out?
Yeah, for the loan.
Oh, okay, for the bonding.
Yep, for the bonding, thank you.
Stefan, um, I'm sorry, just to go back to the Peckham thing, did you uh close the loop and talk to Susan?
Not yet. I wanted to talk to the regional manager first. I will. I've talked to Susan about it a number of times. I'll reach out to Susan.
Okay.
Uh, all right, so DPW building. I spoke to Joe Molino. We had the other, I don't know, I don't think it was a complaint, but we got an email about the fact that he's been posting his properties for sale out there um adjacent to Brick Row. Um, he's always had that for sale. Um, he says what he's looking, he he says, first of all, don't be worried. He still intends to develop it, but he is offering once he gets it subdivided, he will offer parcels out to developers, is what he's saying. So that's why he's out there in the paper. The initial subdivision that he will ask for, which he does not have, uh, he has not gone to the planning board for yet, will be 18 properties on 10 acres. Um, and will use the Brick Row wastewater treatment plant. I ran his numbers past both Joe Myers and Jason. Um, and both are confident that we could take its 4,070 gallons per day. Gallons per month? No, gallons per day. I'm sorry, I forget. Uh, but it's, it's within uh the current capabilities of the plant. So we, he sent me the average daily flows um where we stand. 4,000 would put us right up against our 17,000 limit on the worst month of the year. I see the worst month in the 18 or 20 months that he sent me. We had one month, and if we added 14, 4,000 to it, it would have put us right up against the limit, which they're, they're perfectly comfortable with. We don't have a lot of variability there from an INI standpoint. It doesn't necessarily correlate to rainfall, which he included uh in that assessment. So it's a very different uh, it's a more predictable wastewater treatment uh concern than it will be when he talks about putting a pumping station in and coming down to the village. And I've talked to him about that as well, that to get into to put a pumping station in there to develop the remainder of the houses that he wants to do in that development is not quite as simple a proposition as just pumping down because we are already on the margins on high rainwater. Um, so we can't add another 100, 150 houses in there. Uh, we will wind up uh with issues if we do that. So we need to solve some of our INI issues. And the reason I wanted to bring that up with him is, can we get, you know, I want to use that and use the, the, what he wants to do up there to help us strengthen some of this, the grant applications, Josh. Right, that we have uh 90 acres of developable, developable land that will be restricted uh based on INI. So we need some help with that. So I think that plays into the grant piece. Um, Athens Addiction Coalition, I think uh, thank you to Josh and and the others on there for for keeping this alive. Um, if you guys aren't aware, it was a shock to me that we lost Sam Gruber from the library. Who was.
Death, not to death.
Not to death. No, no, we lost him from the library.
I knew about him leaving. I didn't.
To sound extreme, but really nice guy. I was, I was disappointed to see him gone. Um, but before he left, he did put together the Facebook page for us, which is active uh and uh and there has been content being put out there. Um, a lot of the other things that we had hoped to do are on uh on hold pending social distancing restrictions, et cetera. Uh, we did discuss bringing the Narcan training vehicle up to the firehouse at some point uh on its rounds through the village. Um, so we'll, we'll talk more about doing that and finding a time to do it.
Stefan, also, Paula sent some videos, which I shared with Amy, and I think Amy.
I did, I saw those today. I will get them up on the, on the village Facebook page as well and and possibly I don't know, do you want me to put them on the blog also?
You look at them and you decide.
Let me look at them as well.
Okay.
Me?
Yep. We'll do.
You were on the, you were on the initial distribution list, Stefan.
All right, um, we talked about the village building. The only other thing I am talking to um Claire about Community Day and, you know, similar to the discussion around the Memorial Day Parade is, how do we get creative with it? How do we take it back to sort of its simplest stripped-down form so that we could be ready to go in a week or two notice, right? So that maybe we don't have a date set, we have a plan. And that once restrictions lift, whether it's June, July, September, whatever, we're able to quickly have a stripped-down Community Day to kind of celebrate the restrictions being lifted. Um, the so she's kind of, I think she's already reaching out, you know, the, the sportsman's club said, hey, so long as it's fishing season, they'll do a fishing derby on a couple of days' notice, right? Um, and I think the um VFW said they were interested in participating in whatever fashion they could. So we're looking at that sort of a how do we, how do we just have something simple, ready to go quickly, so that we can have something fast and impactful once uh, once the restrictions lift, so that we can kind of celebrate being back together as a community. So I think, I think they like that idea, uh, so that's what they're looking at for Community Day. So we're still set with the original date, which I think is the 13th or the 14th of June. Um, but that's a TBD sort of thing, and planning will be structured so that we can move quickly uh once, once the opportunity presents. That's all I've got on my list. Amy's doing yoga, which indicates it's time to.
No, I, I had to stretch.
All right, uh, if that's it, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I, no.
Rob made a motion?
I'll second it.
Amy's second. All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed, so carries. All right, and uh we have resolved the question that Zoom is better than YouTube, so.
Yes.
Thank you for putting this together, Amy.
A lot, yeah. Thanks, Amy.
Yeah.
All right, I will be posting, I'm recording it, and it'll get posted on YouTube, and then I'll let everybody know that they can, they can watch it after the fact, and they missed it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.